Yeah, and we haven't heard from Jaren, so we might just get started.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Yeah. Rebecca, do you want to call the meeting to order?
I sure do. And thanks Stephanie for sending that reminder.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have three commissioners with us now, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And this is the zoning commission work session. And I believe the first thing on our agenda is introductions. Hillary, I'm not sure who, who do we have from the public who might be with us?
I just see one name that I don't recognize. The Dr. G CMC PMP CPA. I don't recognize that one, but other than that, we could just do introductions down the line from the participants. Hillary Taylor, I'm a planner too here with the city of Helena.
Lucy Morrell Gangler, City of Helena planning.
I'm Stephanie Reinhardt. I'm the admin assistant with the city planning.
Sharon Haugen, City of Helena Community Development Director.
Rebecca Harbage, zoning commission chair.
Mark Ophas, zoning commission.
Mr. McCabe, are you able to unmute, introduce yourself? Perhaps. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is to approve minutes. Play, Mike, I see you're unmuted now. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Mike McCabe.
Great.
It's Mike.
We had minutes from our March 10th meeting included in our packets from the city. Everyone reviewed those, and if so, take a motion.
I saw move to approve them, the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to the agenda item D, which are the discussion topics for tonight. The first one is to discuss the direction from stakeholders at our meeting that was at the end of July, July 23rd. And then next we'll move on to any final thoughts and direction on the use chart and definition changes. I believe Hillary, the city staff will lead these.
Yes, thank you Rebecca. Hillary Taylor planner too. If you want to look at the memo that was in your packet. We, I'm just going to go over this briefly and talk about the points that we came up with in terms of the stakeholder participation from the July 23rd meeting. We have not yet incorporated these changes in the use chart as we would like the zoning commission to further vet all the proposed changes. But generally, we propose to change food trucks from NP to CUP in the R3. We discussed changing communication towers from NP to CUP in the RO residential ops district. We propose change small general retail, less than 1,000 square feet from NP to CUP in the RU. We propose change in the general professional services from NP to P in the airport district. We propose changing the many stories, 10 or fewer units from P to a CUP in the R3 residential, the RO residential districts. And this is a typo, it's missing the RU district, so it shouldn't have the RU district there as well. And then to allow outdoor storage as a CUP in the CLM and MI, same as mini storage. Except for a CUP in the CLM and the MI. Other items that still need further discussion from the stakeholders meeting include should general professional services be allowed as a general use in the PLI. I will talk about short-term rentals here in just a minute. And then also we need to talk about vehicle charging stations in that there was some discussion that they should be the same as a parking lot use. And we should vet those a bit further this evening. You received an email from us yesterday updating the definitions. And we pulled, we cleaned up the sign, the sign chapter. We thought that we would leave the sign chapter definitions where they are now. In that we will probably address the sign chapter as a whole. So we proposed leaving the sign chapter definitions in that section of code where they are now, so pulling them out. And short-term rentals, it needs a broader community discussion, so we propose to take that out of the definitions chapter and come back to it. When we have the ability to do a broader community discussion. So those are a couple of updates on that. Do we have any questions about my memo? From July 31st? Okay, I'm seeing no, no questions about that from July 31st. Do we have any questions or discussion about the definitions chapters? And we can come back to the definitions chapters certainly as we go through this in the meeting. I have a couple of other notes in terms of the definitions chapter. The main definitions that sort of stick out. That we are updating include the daycare facilities, education, entertainment, outdoor storage. Professional offices, taverns, and vehicle charging stations. So we can talk about those as we go through the use chart itself. Another item of business that will probably come up as we are talking about the use chart will be the supplemental requirements. Specifically, section 1125B. But we can talk about those as we get to the use chart. I'm going to start sharing my screen now, just share this use chart. Let me get over to it.
Hillary, did we get any resolution to those questions that was, that were left after the stakeholder, stakeholder interview? Stakeholder meeting on the definitions?
We didn't have. We have our list of items that were proposed in the meeting. But we haven't incorporated them into the lens chart. And we haven't, we didn't have from the stakeholders meeting, I don't believe that we had any specific questions about definitions.
Okay, just to be clear.
Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So this is the use chart. Right now at this time, we are tentatively planning to not delete the B3, just because there's, it would open a big can of worms. So right now we're thinking that we would leave the B3 in there. I'm just going to start at the beginning and go through the use chart. And I want you guys to jump in as we have comments. Or concerns. So we're going to start in the beginning with residential uses. We moved boarding room. Boarding house out of the residential uses. If you look in your chart, it was now moved underneath overnight accommodations. So boarding house, one to three residents and boarding house, four to 20 residents. Both of those uses have been moved to underneath, the underneath overnight accommodations and out of residential uses. So the definition was made more contemporary and the section was moved to overnight accommodations. Community residential facility types one for one through 12 residents. This is now, would be now consistent with the ruling in the court case that requires these facilities to be treated the same way as residential. It's pretty much straight across the board with the CUP and the CLM. Community residential facility type two, 13 or more residents. Would be non-permitted in the RU, would be permitted in the R3. And then will be a conditional use permit in the CLM as well. We have mobile home parks. Which, there was no change to the mobile home park. Line in the chart. And residential single-family dwelling unit. We made some changes to eliminate some confusion with the supplemental requirements. It would now be permitted in the B2, excuse me, it would be a CUP in the B2 and a CUP in the CLM. And then in the supplemental requirements. We have a proposal. That it would be for 11. Single and two-dwelling residential uses in the B2 and CLM. Districts are permitted by right in the same building as the permitted retail or commercial use. Those residential uses may not be adjacent to the front lot line. Residential uses in the DT district are permitted by right in the story that is above retail or commercial use. And that should keep us in good shape for the supplementals. The supplementals were just a little bit hard to read and they were a little clunky, so we updated them.
So Hillary, that is a change, so when we do changes, let's explain the change a little bit.
Yeah, and I apologize in that with the supplemental requirements, I don't have it where I can screen share it with you right now. So if that's something that you would like further information on, beyond just reading it to you. That's something that we can provide to you after the meeting.
It might be good just to go over it real quick right now too. We found in the B2 that the way the supplemental was provided. It required the residential unit above the commercial or retail. And there were some people who had situations where they wanted to put a residential use in the back. Or below, or in a different location other than above. And so the change to the supplemental would allow that flexibility, except that the residential could not be in the front of the building. So that, that's the change with the supplemental and the reason for the CUP.
So does anybody have any comments on that?
Did it, does it address when a, a building has two street frontages, like on a corner lot?
Good question.
Because of the definition of front lot line, it would not be required in either of those locations. Any part of the building that fronts a street would not permit the residential use.
Well, and the DT and Rebecca, the DT and the TR districts, the chapter nine would still apply to those.
And does that allow residential properties? Where does that allow residential properties?
Well, in the transitional residential district, you're allowed residential on the main floor by right. On either a front, a primary frontage or a secondary frontage. And in the downtown.
Continue, yeah.
Yeah, and in the downtown, it has to be upstairs.
I think I remember some discussions from when we were talking about the downtown zone, but we talked about buildings that were on, you know, they, either a corner or there are some downtown where they even more than two. And I can't remember how we addressed residential uses in those buildings.
Yeah.
In the downtown, since it's required to be in the story above, there's no restriction on which side of the building it is. As long as it is above. The first floor.
Yeah, if you look at the supplemental, it's the B2 of B3 CLM and MI would be subject to 1125C. And DT and TR would be subject to 1125C and 1125D. And we just proposed to make 1125C and 1125D less cumbersome. 1125D is for downtown and transitional residential districts supplemental requirements refer to chapter nine. So Rebecca, it takes you back to chapter nine. And 1125C is again, single and two-dwelling residential uses in the B2 and the CLM. Districts are permitted by right in the same building as the permitted retail or commercial use. Those residential units may not be adjacent to the front lot line.
The other change to that section is we removed residential or single unit residential out of the MI.
Correct.
So everybody okay with that?
This is, this is Mark Ophas, yeah. I, I feel like this makes sense, especially if it's largely just to clarify what the supplemental requirements were anyway.
Actually, Mark, it is a change. To what the supplemental requirements are. The supplemental requirement set, used to say it had to be above. The use. Now we're saying it could be on the same floor, but in the back or the side, but not in the front. So that's the change.
And regardless of which, it does require a CUP. That's also a changer, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Mike McCabe.
Go for it, Mike.
This is Mike McCabe, but makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say I'm okay with this too.
All right, this applies to the single dwelling unit and it also applies to the two dwelling units. You can see that you could do a duplex this way as a CUP in the B2 or as a CUP in the CLM. We also have a, any CUP in the OSR. Which is neither here nor there. But it would be the same update to the supplemental language. And then as we're all on board with that, moving on to residential.
Hillary and Lucy, I do have a quick question, so do I have to get a CUP if my dwelling units are above now?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's also a change.
Yes. Correct.
Okay with that, I think that seems, that seems appropriate in a business zone that we would consider residential uses of the CUP.
Well, are, are we at all looking to, I guess with the updates to our CUP process, are we at all looking to, yes? What's the term we're using, I guess, kind of control or not control, but uh, kind of regulate? What type of residential, what happens on that, on that property, on that piece of property if a residence is put above a commercial first level?
Oh, I, I hear what you're saying, yeah. In terms of what would be the, I mean, so one of the things we've got to think about when we make it a CUP, which is kind of related to your question. Is looking at the CUP criteria. For these types of uses. So. So that doesn't change. The criteria you just used or developed would be what you would judge whether or not this would be suitable. In those B2 and CLM districts.
Yeah, and which, which I guess would be fine, I guess ultimately my, could be, because I think we did a relatively good job. Revamping those to give them a little more teeth. Not to say that teeth need to be used. But I guess maybe more, my more bigger point was, is this at all potentially? Eliminating or making it harder for housing to be built in Helena?
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. I also, I guess wondering, the criteria we came up with for CUP is, I think a lot of that. Relates more to. Making sure if a, if a business or some other type of development goes into a residential zone. That it is appropriate for that zone. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what exactly we would. Say is not a good fit if a residence is proposed to go in, say above, next to, or behind. A business in the B2 zone. What, what would be the conditions we would apply to that?
A lot of it would be character and screening and certainly all of the ones we had before, access to, well, traffic, pedestrian traffic. Any, any character of the, of the neighborhood. What else? I mean, I, I guess, you know, I am worried that this is, this perhaps goes a little bit against the the greater, or I guess the call for more, more housing. And if we, if we're doing that, I guess, I guess it comes down, for me anyway, just the. Well, I, I guess here, here's a question. Let's test this out this way. Could we use the CUP process to? Require or suggest or, or create a condition where the housing had to be added above? To more maximize some commercial space on the lower level in a space? And I'm just using, saying that as an example. Do, does our CUP process actually have the ability to even? And that's just one example. I'm not sure we would want to do that in any, in any instance, but that's how it's been for a while. And I don't know how long, but is there? Well, is, is, is that necessarily a problem? That we want to continue to be able to? I guess correct.
So maybe it would be helpful, a little bit of background. An ordinance was changed to allow. Uh, residences above. Because the commission at the time, zoning and city commission. Saw the need for an opportunity. For those smaller businesses who had mom and pop stores, kind of using that old model, where a lot of the apartments were above. The store, so they deliberately made that supplemental in there. Instead of going through the CUP process, so you wouldn't have to go through the CUP process as long as you placed it up there. This change would. Add, would make this a CUP and there would be no supplemental conditions. So it does become more restrictive in a way for those residential uses above the business. But it gives an option for residential units in the back of the store, in the B2 and the CLM. So that's probably the quickest way or, or one way to look at it. Yeah.
I appreciate that.
I don't know if that answers your question.
Oh, I appreciate it. And having a little context to it and history behind it originally. Does help kind of my thought process to this. You know, and I'm not sure how frequently this even comes up. But I would imagine, you know, it will from time to time.
Yeah, more often than not, we see people utilizing the multiple dwelling units as a permitted use in the B2. That's where we're seeing more fourplexes being constructed in the B2. As outright use.
And I actually really like that, because that's, that's more density, more housing generally in areas that have services, so. Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I just, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to test it in my head. It, it seems to make, it seems to make good sense. And I, I'd be in support of us moving on, I guess.
Well, another, another question I had for staff, I assume that you highlighted in red all of the places where CUP showed up in the use table?
That's correct.
Were we also hoping as part of this effort that we would? Have a further discussion and perhaps reduce the number of CUPs?
That's certainly part of the discussion, so when you see a CUP. If you want to have a discussion about whether or not it should be permitted or not permitted. This is the time to kind of do that. I mean, this is a chart that would do that.
That is funny, Rebecca, I remember us working pretty hard to try and keep the CUP out of the use table for DT and, and TR. I, I, maybe, maybe my memory is slipping, whether or not it was a goal of ours as a group. From the city or even the, the commission to eliminate more CUPs from the use table altogether. But I know we, we didn't want to do it on the, on the downtown and TR, the new districts that, that we got through last year. I don't know.
If my memory is accurate. I think we had the sort of the two-pronged conversation about CUPs and one was to update the criteria we would consider. At a CUP, and then the other I think was to take a look at the use table and determine if any of these should actually just be permitted or not permitted. I think we were seeing a handful, at least of applications come in where. This, it seemed like maybe that use should just be outright permitted in the zone and not considered CUP.
And we certainly, I mean, as you go through them, if you see a use that you think you want for discussion purposes. To eliminate a CUP, make a permitted use. I, Lucy and Hillary, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you looked at that too, didn't you?
We did.
We did. But there are certain situations such as this where we have it permitted, the CUP. You know, we're looking to you for direction as to whether you feel that this is necessary to be a CUP or not. We just put that out there for discussion. It still has a supplemental that would require it in the back or the side or, or above. So is that direction enough to permit it by right? Or do you think that there should be more direction for that particular use in the B2 or CLM? So, you know, eliminating the CUP is certainly a valid option.
What this does is it requires someone who wants to do a single-family dwelling unit in the B2. It requires them to go. You know, through the zoning commission and the city commission. And I think that you guys raised a good point as to whether or not it should come to that level.
And I think that you guys raised a good point as to whether or not it should come to that level.
I might, I might look to you guys a little bit for your experience, I guess, how, how often, just with these three in particular that we're, we're talking about these residential ones. How often, how often does a two-dwelling unit residential come up for a B2 for development?
I can remember two in my tenure at the city.
I can remember some that were not permitted because it wasn't a, they wanted it behind or beside. They didn't have an option to put it above. There was no second story. And so they didn't even get as far as an application or discussion because the building didn't accommodate one residential above.
Was that for a single family or duplex, Lucy?
I think it was a single family.
Yeah, I've seen a caretaker residence that they wanted to do on the first floor. And there was no second floor for them to put it on. So they were just not able to have their caretaker residence. So we just had to tell them that it was just not an option.
So to answer your question, very rarely, Mark, and, and it hard, never duplex, most often on the rare occasion, somebody who wants living quarters in the back of the building because.
Okay, I appreciate that. That history, that makes sense. Again, I, I, I actually, in this instance, I'm, I'm supportive as it, as it shown on the screen.
Okay, how about you, Mr. McCabe? Or Rebecca? Mike, do you want to speak? I saw you took yourself off mute.
Yes. I've got a bad connection here in terms of staying on. I've been bounced off four times.
Do you have a, a strong opinion on single or duplex residential units in the B2? That are CUP?
I really don't, one way or the other.
I think we go forward with it as is. This will take this out to the public and for a hearing. We'll see if we get more feedback. Okay. All right, we're moving on to residential multiple, multiple dwelling units, three or more units. Here again, you will see the supplementals apply. It would be a CUP in R2 to have a triplex or a fourplex. And it would be a CUP in the CLM to have a triplex or a fourplex or above. So those are the CUPs there. If I don't hear any objections, I'll move on to non-residential uses. And I apologize, you can't see the legend in the chart on the screen, but you should have it in the printouts that we mailed to you guys. So you should be able to follow along that way. So for non-residential uses, we did not change anything in horticulture. We did not change anything in medical marijuana grow operations beyond making sure that the supplemental refers to the correct letter for that. We want to make sure that it's, it's the correct supplemental reference. For commercial nursery, that would be a new use. So the use is present in the community, but it was not defined or permitted by the use charts. We put in a use for commercial nurseries be permitted in the B1, the B2, the CLM, and the MI. Do I have any discussion about community nur- or commercial nurseries? I'm not hearing anything. So moving on to community gardens, community gardens is again the use that's present in the community, but was not, was not defined or permitted by the use chart. It would be permitted across the board for community gardens.
This looks good to me.
All right. So that moves us out of non-residential uses into the community services uses. Here we deleted administrative government agency and made that a part of the general or professional services definition. So we deleted it from the use chart and moved it into general professional uses, which falls in your use chart under services. That's where that moves to. And it cleans it up a little bit out of this location. Moving on to animal shelter. The CUPs were eliminated because this use was determined to be consistent with the intensity of the other uses a lot of the districts. So we made it a permitted use in the B2, a permitted use in the CLM, and a permitted use in MI. So we got rid of some CUPs. That's good. Do we have any discussion of animal shelters? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to community center. Here at the community center, we clarified the definition to only allow non-commercial buildings. And then we found the intensity of the use agreeable to the R3 and the R4. So we made a permitted use in the R3 and a permitted use in the R4, once that definition was clarified to only allow non-commercial buildings. Do we have any discussion about community centers? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to community cultural facilities. Here we've got CUPs in the RU, the R2, the R3, the R4, and permitted in B1 and B2, permitted in the downtown, permitted in the TR, and then not permitted in the CLM and the MI, and then permitted again with PLI and the airport. Do we have any discussion about community cultural facilities? We didn't make any changes there. All right, seeing none. We move on to correctional facility. Here we made the correctional facility a permitted use in the PLI because that would be consistent with current uses and the intent of the district. Do we have any discussion there? Okay. Seeing none. Moving on to pre-release center. Here we eliminated the CUPs in the B2, the CLM, and the PLI permitted uses. It would still be a CUP in the B1. It would still be a CUP in the downtown.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't speak up here earlier. I actually think correctional facility permitted in PLI is something we might want to actually discuss just a little bit, just given where PLI exists in the, in the city limits. It includes some, I guess, some prominent parks and certainly, you know, areas around hospitals and some other schools are PLI often. So I'm not sure this would come up very often, but I, it's, maybe it's something we should consider leaving as a CUP.
Yeah, I agree. Sorry, it took me a minute to pull up the zoning map and take a look at where we have parcels of PLI. And yeah, I mean, some of those are right in the middle of residential zones. And so I would agree that it makes sense to leave that as a CUP.
And I would, I would echo that again for pre-release center.
Also in the PLI?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the B2 and CLM where it's also proposed to be permitted? For the pre-release?
Yeah, I might prefer the pre-release stay as a CUP in the B2. I'm less concerned about it in the CLM. Rebecca or Michael, do you happen to have an opinion too on that?
I would make it not permitted in B2. I'm, I'm very hesitant to continue to put out all of these CUPs.
Oh, so you would just say, just, just NP in the B2?
I would, yes.
Okay. And what about, say, the B1 and the DT?
I really don't have an opinion on that.
Okay, so obviously in the comments, it says it was, there's clarifications based on consistency with intent of state law that we'd probably want to consider if we, if we move those to NP.
I don't, I don't know that there'd be a issue of consistency with state law if you kept it the same, but it's got up to you guys. I mean, that's why we have you here. I don't mean, I don't mean to make it sound like a cop out. That's why we're bringing this to you to feedback.
Yeah. What I'm hearing you say to go back is correctional facilities in the PLI should be a CUP still? Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then pre-release centers should still be a CUP in the PLI? And then should also be a CUP in the B2? I, I think it should stay a CUP for now. I'm just looking at the zoning map and I mean, I would want to consider the buffering between where a facility would be located in B2 and the surrounding neighborhood. And I'm, I guess that just makes me wonder about our use of B1 as a potential buffer between some of the residential districts and the B2, but that's a separate conversation. But are you okay with leaving it as a permitted use in the CLM? That works for me.
I am.
Okay, well, read that back. The pre-release center would be a CUP in the B1, would be a CUP in the B2, would be a CUP in the downtown, non-permitted in the TR, permitted in the CLM, non-permitted in the MI, and a CUP in the PLI. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounded like it.
Okay.
We'll review that again, obviously, but yeah, I think, I think.
Okay. All right, moving on to public safety facilities. Here, public safety facilities are places such as firehouses, things of that nature. Here we made it permitted use in the RO or the R4, and that was the only change. Do you have any comments about that?
That sounds good to me.
All right, moving on to worship facilities. This would be a change in that we propose to take the CUP out of the R3 and make it a permitted use in the R3. This has got some back history to it in that for a long time churches were permitted uses in R3. So we have quite a few of them that are in R3 zoning districts. And now it's a CUP. So we chose to make a recommendation to put it back to permitted use. And that's the only change for worship facilities. Do we have any discussion? I think this is one that has come up in the past with some parking concerns from neighbors. Is that correct? I don't have any institutional knowledge of that, but I do know that for worship facilities, they have a large parking reduction that is available to them, no matter what district they're in.
There, there are two worship facilities on the west side, probably in about the 1400 or 1500 block. One's located relatively close to Sierra Anderson. And there are parking issues, there's no doubt. But those were permitted in years and years ago when that whole area was developing. And I think the churches were there before there were houses.
And Rebecca, you are, you are correct, or maybe Hillary. When the change was made, the commission at the time was looking at the potential impact of the church on the residential area. So they chose to change it from a permitted use to a CUP. And that's the reason rationale for it at that time.
And a side note, unless you change the parking requirement or the ability to allow so much of the parking to count on-street, even with a CUP, it may not solve that parking issue. Because if they're in compliance with parking, you know, I, I, I think that's the issue perhaps is the parking requirement.
That's helpful. Thank you. I'm not hearing anyone wanting to change it back to a CUP per se. Do, do we have anyone, you know, that has a feeling that it should continue to be a conditional use permit?
To clarify for me, this is Mike McCabe, if we made it permitted, they'd still have to satisfy parking requirements, would they?
Correct.
Well, I don't, I, what difference does it make? That's probably going to be the key issue. Specifically, I'm thinking about a church closer down right behind the old Blue Cross Blue Shield building or Western Life building. That church has been there, was, was there before all that development happened along Park Avenue. And parking has been a nightmare down there forever.
I think I'm okay with leaving it as is proposed, changing it from CUP to P. I guess one request of staff is when this does go out to the public, I would like, so some of these topics that we've sort of waffled on, it would be nice if the
I would like, so some of these topics that we've sort of waffled on, it would be nice if those could be flagged in whatever does go out to the public, just letting the public know that the zoning commission is specifically looking for input on a handful of issues.
Great thought, Rebecca.
Yeah, we can do that. We can talk about it a little bit in terms of the best way to ask the public for input, but we will, that is, we are proposing a public hearing, so there would be a staff report and we can vet the issues that way. Okay, so let's move on to education. Here, we eliminated the higher education and replaced it with several other definitions, including kindergarten preschool, elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. So you see that the kindergarten preschools would be a CUP in the B1 and the B2. It would not be permitted in the CLM or the MI or the airport. Middle schools would also be a CUP in the B1 and the B2, would also be non-permitted in the CLM, MI, and the airport. And then high schools would also be a CUP in the B1 and the B2, and would not be permitted in the CLM, MI, or the airport. Do we have any discussion about the changes that we propose under education?
Yes, question, and I don't know if Mark has any context on this, but would these changes be in line with, you know, the site selection for the new schools that were recently built around Helena? And are there other schools that staff know of that would be relocating? It seems like this wouldn't come up that frequently, but I just want to make sure that we're not, for example, eliminating the possibility of a high school in an R3 district when that might be the best spot. Just want to hear if there's any more context on that.
I've got just a little bit, I guess, certainly Central School, that, that property is PLI. And it, and it always was a school, certainly, so, and Bryant was an existing school too, so that wasn't new. Wasn't a new location. Neither of those two were. Jim Darcy is outside of city limits. So I guess I don't have a lot to add here. The, the recent three that were built. Basically, this one, one of us acted any of that. As far as any background information of any other sort of school changes or school district changes, I don't, I guess I'm not, not privy to that either, so, sorry.
Well, and in, in terms of the schools that would be allowed in R3, we said that both elementary, preschool, kindergarten schools and middle schools would be permitted in R3, just not high schools.
I assume that's because of the driving students.
Right.
I actually think that's, that's quite sound, since these are, these are newly defined. I think that's a, that's a, it's a great way to like present it out there and see if it sticks. I mean, new high schools certainly don't come up very often at all. And, and I believe state law requires school district property to be purchased adjacent to school property, so that's, that gives an avenue anyway, or at least it requires it without a vote. A community can vote to authorise purchasing of school district property outside of, or not adjacent to school district property already. I believe that's state law anyway. That's what we had to go through in East Helena, with the East Helena High School. So, you know, the way rezoning typically works anyway is, is that can be expanded as long as there's an adjacent zone. I mean, with, let's call it relative, relative ease, I mean, there's a path for that, and there's certainly precedent for that, so I'm not sure this, this would ever come up otherwise, so.
The only other incident would be if it becomes a private school or similar to our Montessori schools or something. Then I don't know if the same state law applies, but just, just to throw that out there. I, I don't know of any private schools, but we have seen a couple. Montessori schools actually come up in the last few years.
Yeah, there's been quite a few. What, um, what, what, is that it? And that's, I assume that's in kindergarten preschools and elementary.
Yeah, but like.
Private Montessori usually.
At least one, one of the private schools I know goes all the way up to high school. So just putting that out there.
So would that be considered at the highest possible use as a high school or?
Yeah, we would, yeah.
Private school that covered all grades.
Yeah, I think you would have to look at the highest possible use, but I'll give you, that's very rare, but it does happen. More, but Montessori, yeah, I think Mark is right, Montessori schools, I think, are more geared towards elementary, maybe middle school.
Aaron, what is that reference to specifically?
What's that?
The, the, high, all the way up to high school on a private school?
Well, it's when I, I meant a private school that has students all the way from first grade all the way through high school.
Well, I understand, but what, what, is there a specific location that you're talking about or institution?
Well, it, I'm trying to, it was one of the two private schools that actually had a couple of high school students.
Cottonwood?
Might be Hawthorne, yeah.
Or Cotton, was it Cottonwood?
It was Cottonwood, I think. Yeah.
I mean, it does seem the, the climate nationally around charter schools that it's possible we could be seeing more schools that sort of sit in between, aren't necessarily a kindergarten preschool, elementary, middle school, or high school. So it's, it would just be good to have that conversation now, I guess, and determine as a commission that we would consider them as a high school.
I should also note, I'm, I'm looking at the definitions of, of these new definitions for schools, and they all include the term, or start with the term, a school focusing on the education of students in the grades X through X. So I, I think there's, maybe, maybe there's a an argument, if we wanted to, I guess, to, to maybe revisit that definition as well. Because a, say, a private school that didn't necessarily focus on high school students or high school age students, would we be okay with that in, I guess, being allowed, if, if the focus could be argued on middle school students? Would we want that to be allowed in, in R3? I mean, I guess the, the intent is still maybe meant because the intensity that would come with a high school likely isn't there. Part of me is okay with the way it's actually written, but I, I think we should probably be okay with that.
Yeah, I actually like that language, that wording that it focuses on. So first, for example, if it was, that was mainly a Montessori and focused on kindergarten preschool younger children, but had a couple of high schoolers, I would think that would probably still, for the purposes of zoning, fit where a kindergarten preschool elementary would be.
Yeah, I think from our perspective, we're, we probably wouldn't change anything in this table based on that, that condition or that situation.
I did want to just note, I was looking at the definitions also, and I think that in the definitions, we have junior high school and not middle school.
We'll check on that and clean it up.
Okay.
I guess, from my point of view, these new definitions of schools, or at least in the table, as I understand, the definitions of these schools, I like where they're sitting, based on kind of the discussion we, we talked about right now. Yeah, yeah, I don't have anything else to add, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, it's, this has been a good discussion. I'm not hearing any objections to the locations of the CUPs. Just some concern about potentially the R3. And we will make note of this discussion in the minutes and in the staff report for the next public hearing. And if I'm hearing no further discussion, we can move on to food and beverage sales. Okay, the big change in food and beverage sales comes when we changed the definition from tavern to licensed facilities. But before we hop down there, we did, there was one proposed change for casinos. And that casinos would be permitted use in the B2 and permitted use in the CLM. How do we feel about that?
I think this goes back to our conversation about downtown and CUPs and casinos. And I, if I'm remembering right, we did have a conversation about the fact that putting a CUP in the town didn't necessarily create any more of a hurdle for casinos locating there, because they were a CUP everywhere. And so allowing them to be permitted in select zones does mean that it would be a higher bar if they want to locate in the downtown.
I think one of the arguments for the CUP, getting rid of the CUP in the B2, is just that in terms of the intensity of the use, it's very similar to the other uses in the district that's already there. And likewise in the CLM. But I don't have, you know, I, that I would like to hear some feedback from you in terms of whether or not you think it should continue to be a CUP in the B2 and the CLM, or whether or not the change permitted is a come here.
Hey, so I, I think it, it makes sense to me to change it to permitted in B2 and in CLM with the caveat that I would still like to see the city commission address the number of casinos we have in the city limits. It's a larger conversation.
Sure, and I don't know legally what the, maybe Sharon can jump in in terms of how casinos are regulated at the citywide level.
I, I don't think, I, I think for the zoning, I under, I appreciate and understand what you're saying, Rebecca. I think that's another discussion at a different level.
Yes.
So.
Agreed. Yep, I don't need more background today. I was just commenting that I think it is appropriate for them to be permitted in B2 and CLM. But I do think that the city should address the proliferation of casinos in a separate conversation. I don't want it to look like the zoning commission is encouraging or inviting more casinos to be located in those zones, because we're switching them to permitted. But I do like that allowing them outright in those two zones means they may be less likely to locate or to seek a CUP for downtown.
And just to note, they still have the restrictions of chapter 40, all those distance requirements.
Right, thanks for that too.
Mark, do you have any comments?
Um, nothing, I guess, new to add. I actually really appreciate Rebecca's comments, because I feel like they're, they're looking at it from a, from a point of fact, and I, we've had a lot of discussions on, you know, what, from a, from an actual use standpoint, I guess, what actual impacts compared to certain other uses as a casino have over others. And I guess it's, it's never really come down to the impact. It always seems to come down to the perception of what a casino does to a place. Preconceived or otherwise, or totally false or otherwise. So I think, I guess, I, I really appreciate her comments there, like I, just on the argument of intensity. We, we we could be okay with it, but I think it should, should be noted, and certainly maybe even like stick as many asterisks as you can around this entire conversation for the city commission to review it. Because I would, I think the public should also weigh in on this pretty heavily.
Based upon Rebecca's comments and, and the follow-up by Mark, this is one of the instances where I very honestly believe the CUP ought to remain, and, and I'm, it hurts me to have to say that, but with the CUP, you do have the capability of putting some provisions on that casino that may be beneficial short-term or long-term to how the city develops.
Mike, you're, you always talk some sense into this. I appreciate it.
Would we then add a CUP to mirror that for a licensed facility?
I would agree.
It's the conversation we keep having, like Mark mentioned, just the, the difference in impact between a casino and a licensed facility.
Well, do we, what, did we come to a decision about casinos, whether or not should be a CUP in the B2 or the CLM? I'm hearing two against one.
Sorry, I'm hearing no decision also.
Well, I've spoken, ought to be settled, shouldn't it? How'd you like that, Sharon?
I expect nonetheless. That was, you know, isn't that really the case, right?
Well, what can you say?
I don't know, I'm, I'm maybe inclined to change, change my idea here. I think what Mike, Mike said there is is pretty apt too. Maybe, maybe that's enough of an argument for us to just leave it CUP. And maybe we discuss it with the public.
Yeah, I, I think it's one that the, the public certainly has to, has to address, and I think the need to address it not only there, but in terms of licensed facilities in both cases, and talk about what it means to the future growth and development of a city to have a overabundance of casinos and licensed facilities.
Okay.
Because right now, if you drive down Prospect, I mean, it's it's disgusting, excuse me.
So I'm hearing you say that casinos should remain a conditional use permit in the B2, but that it would be but that it would be okay for me to be a permitted use in the CLM?
No, both.
CUP in both?
I struggle with this one. I, I think, I guess we could, I would be okay with leaving it as a CUP in both for now. With the expectation or hope that at some point in the future it can be dealt with at a higher level in a way that could lead us to allow it to be a permitted use in those two zones.
Okay, well, let's not belabor the point too much. Let's talk a little bit about the fact that's, we've got CUPs for casinos in both B2 and CLM. And we'll include some discussion of that before we go to public hearing. For restaurants, we made it a permitted use in the CLM. We do have some CLM that pops up in more commercial areas. And so we made, thought it would make sense to allow restaurants in those areas. Do we have any discussion about that?
I don't know.
No discussion? So then we will move on to restaurant, which we clarified is opposed to being a drive-in, to be a drive-through. Because nowadays, we don't drive to the restaurant, we drive through the restaurant. And we've changed it so that it would be a permitted use in the CLM. Do we have any discussion there?
I have, this is so minor, it seems like, but is there any particular reason why we wouldn't consider leaving drive-in or drive-through together in that? What if, what if somebody wants to put in a drive-in? Like, I believe RBs on Helen Avenue would probably still be considered a drive-in?
Go ahead.
No, I don't think that's a problem at all.
Yeah.
Okay, specialized food production.
Yeah, there we changed from non-permitted in the R4 to permitted. And that was the only change there. Do you have any discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to the big one in this category, which is going from tavern to licensed premise. This was, the definition was cleaned up to be consistent with state law. And then we changed it from a non-permitted use to a permitted use in the B1. And from a CUP to a permitted use in the C, excuse me, a CUP to a permitted use in the CLM. And to a CUP in the PLI. And then to a permitted use in the airport district. Which I think, Lucy, correct me if I'm wrong, we actually ended up keeping the supplemental requirements for this one, for the airport district.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the supplementals would allow it by ride in the terminal building, but would require a CUP if it's located outside of the terminal building.
Do I see any discussion about this?
Can I ask why it would be a CUP outside of the terminal?
We changed it so that it wouldn't be. But the supplemental was required to be.
Well, then it would be required to be.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we would need to clean that up in the supplemental.
So to answer your question, Rebecca, well, maybe the, from the practical aspect of it, the airport board pretty much controls whatever is allowed on the airport. And they want to keep all, um, I'm trying to remember if the Forest Service and Mako are, are airport or if they're, um, yeah, they are.
They're airport.
Yeah, there, I couldn't remember if they're airport or B2 like Costco was. And that's airport property. But, um, I think you'd probably get some, I, I don't know, but I sense you'd probably maybe get some pushback from the airport authority, but we could float it and see what they said. Last time we had that discussion, they wanted to keep it in the terminal, but, and there aren't that many businesses, well, there are commercial businesses outside the terminal, I guess, is the other thought. Those are my only two explanations.
I'm fine with leaving it. I don't, I don't see it probably coming up much if the airport board is controlling what is going on on their property. And rather than make them upset with us and cause a big fuss, maybe we just leave it.
So Rebecca, are you saying that you want to leave it as a permitted CUP?
Whatever you had decided would be included, I think. I, I guess it's confusing to me to say that it is permitted, but to have a supplemental that says it's a CUP.
Right. Okay.
As a user of these tables, fairly often, if it, if the cell said P slash CUP, I'm more likely to put a little more effort into reading, say if I were to do a, kind of, do a cursory kind of feasibility for somebody, I would, I would jump to those supplementary requirements. So it, you know, is there, is there even an option for us to? I mean, are we trying to eliminate the P slash CUP in this table? Because it's inconsistent with the rest of it? Or is that okay to leave it that way? Or can you put an asterisk next to it? So, so somebody might say, hey, this is, this one might be a little bit of a hiccup. Read the supplementary requirements. More from a user's standpoint.
Yeah, I don't see it being treated all that differently from any other part of the chart. It doesn't come up very often, and the supplemental requirement is pretty clear. So it kind of comes up to whether or not you think it should be a CUP outside the terminal or not.
Is that, Sharon, that's what you said, the airport board had?
I, I think, well, I think the airport board would tell you they don't want it outside even with a CUP.
Gotcha.
It'd be my sense of it, but it'd be, I mean, but the reality is, if I wanted to open a bar outside the terminal, I'd have to get past the airport authority. And they could just say, you know, for, and I don't know if it's a rules tight enough to know if that's also a factor, but I do know that that factors in the placement of buildings on the airport property, particularly closer to the runway. So. I, I don't know if it, I, I'm not really sure the advantage of having a CUP or outside the terminal or not.
There, could there be an argument made that if we leave it as it was with, with CUP, that at least is somewhat consistent, I guess, to, to that jurisdiction, so to speak? You know, and they're going to have the final say, or, or the city could have this final say, one or the other, but they have to line up in order for that project to move forward, regardless of which. It doesn't matter which lines up. So it does almost seem like in order to be friendly with this airport authority, we would maybe want to keep it a little more tightened up. It doesn't, doesn't eliminate it, but it at least aligns it, and they see that, and that might be, that might be worth something, and I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say that we're okay with licensed facility with the other changes suggested, but that for the airport, we should stay with P slash UP and the supplementals?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, yes.
I guess, another question about the change from not permitted to permitted in B1?
Yeah.
We don't, we, we kept casino as not permitted in B1? Was there, what was the reasoning for changing it to permitted for a licensed facility?
Rebecca, to be honest with you, it might be as simple as we were going more for a cheers. Neighborhood bar.
Right.
No, I, I think, I, I think that's, that's kind of simplistic, but that concept is kind of what drove that.
And you can have a restaurant in B1, though. Beer and wine, spirits, along with a restaurant. It's that idea of the neighborhood center that we're starting to look at after the growth policy. What we want in neighborhood centers.
And I guess is the idea that, that the neighborhood center would be rezoned as B1? Because I'm, I guess I'm looking at the fact that restaurants are also permitted in RU and R4, R O. And those are kind of our mixed use, a little bit more urban feeling residential zones. And so I, I agree with what you, what you said, Hillary, about licensed facilities and restaurants supporting each other or being one in the same. I wonder if they should be consistent.
There isn't a lot of B1 in the city at this point in time. Where you find it, I think Rodney Street has a little bit of B1.
Used to be Reader's Island.
Yeah. Yeah, close to the courthouse, that commercial district there is B1. I believe there is a establishment there that sells alcohol.
So it is a Myrna Loy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, certainly we're not the, the all and all for licensed facilities. I mean, they have to go through the state.
I, again, there's also requirements by the state of Montana with regard to where you can locate a licensed facility. And to kind of go back to your question, no, we don't have a lot of B1, but B1 might be one of those zoning districts you might look at when we're creating neighborhood centers. So, oh, um, there are so many ways to, I mean, this is why this conversation is important, because you're talking about long-term, how you want your neighborhood and your city to look.
I do want to raise the question of time. We are, we were scheduled to go from 6:00 to 7:30. Does anybody have any trouble extending to 8?
And stay on until 8?
Okay. Okay. Um, so for licensed premise, Rebecca, I'm not hearing that there's a lot of support for aligning it directly with restaurants in the RU and the R O. So are we okay with it just as a permitted use in the B1?
I am, yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I think, like Sharon brought up, just for a future conversation about how we use B1 and then also how we incorporate our more urban feeling residential zones.
Yeah.
And B1 might be something we want to consider, but not for today.
Sure. Okay, kiosks, this is a new use?
Well, it's actually an existing use. But it's new to the chart.
New to the chart. So we put it in as non-permitted in the RU, the R1, the R3, the R4, but a permitted use in the B1, B2, non-permitted downtown or the transitional residential, but permitted in the CLM and the MI. Do we have any discussion about kiosks? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to food trucks. This is also a new use to the chart. And it follows a similar vein as kiosks. And then it would be non-permitted in the RU, the R1, R2, R3, but would be permitted in the R4, the B1, the B2, the DT, the TR, the CLM, the MI, the PLI, and the airport. And I believe you guys wanted to change food trucks from NP and to CUP for the R3. Are we still at that? That they should be CUP in the R3? That was at the last discussion?
If I recall correctly, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I guess, but if I recall correctly, that question was raised by Kim. And, and I think the, kind of the resolution, or the reason he was posing the question was, does that mean that I, say a block party couldn't have a food truck parked on the street for a temporary event? And I, I believe this, this wouldn't prevent that, right? Even if it's left NP in the R3?
Yeah, I think that, that sounds familiar to me, too, and I think it was that, I mean, this is a, this is like a permanent location for a food truck. It's not a, it's not addressing a mobile unit, right? It would be
Right.
Really had a designated spot where a food truck would always park, for example.
Yeah, and actually, food trucks are also, they, they're parking on the, well, they often are parking on the property, often they're just parking on the street.
Right.
Which is not technically zoned R3, it's, it's city property. That's correct.
We currently do not allow food trucks to park on the streets in any of the residential areas. We only allow food trucks to park where restaurants or drive-ins are permitted.
Oh, okay, so if we're following the density, I guess, that would, that would prevent food trucks from parking in R3, because restaurant is not permitted in R3.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that, that is, that is, I guess, the difference is you wouldn't even, this would be implied that you, you could not park a food truck in an R3, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's our current practice. I'm trying, and I don't, I should have the zoning map in front of me. I apologize, I don't, but, um, but if you want to allow food trucks in the R3, that would be just a change in city policy. And we would permit them in R3. But we're trying to make sure that they weren't going in the single But we were trying to make sure that they weren't going in the single-family neighborhoods. And, um, you know, the other food truck, we don't often think about, but it, I, I've heard it maybe three or four times this summer, is that ice cream truck that floats around town too. Technically, that's also a food truck. And that was in my neighborhood just the other day.
I think we ought to leave it not permitted in R three with the idea of, again, establishing a little bit of a zone that's going to protect R one, R two.
Okay. Any other discussion on food trucks? If we leave it as N P in the C in the R three?
I mean, I don't, I don't really have any, I guess. Well, not now.
All right, we can move on to healthcare. Healthcare, here we changed the definition from healthcare center to healthcare office. And we made it a C U P in the R three, permitted in the R O, permitted in the B one, B two, permitted in the downtown, the T R, and then permitted in the C L M, non-permitted in the M I, uh, non-permitted in the P L I, and non-permitted in the airport. Do we have any discussion here? Okay, we did not make any changes to healthcare facilities. That remains the same with the C U P in the RU, C U P in the R four, R O, C U P in the B one, permitted in the B two, permitted downtown, permitted in the T R, non-permitted in the C L M, the M I, and permitted in the P L I, and non-permitted in the airport. We can come back to either of those if you choose, but we can also move on to industrial manufacturing. Here we've got contractor yard, we didn't make any changes to contractor yard. Um, industrial heavy, no changes there. Industrial light, no changes there. And then we eliminated industrial park because the use is defined by light and heavy industrial, we just didn't use. Junkyard, there were no changes. And then motor wrecking, motor vehicle wrecking facility, we made one change. We proposed that would be a C U P and a C L M, that would be permitted by right in the M I. Do you have any discussion about motor vehicle wrecking facilities? All right, moving on to overnight accommodations. Here we cleaned up the definition of bed and breakfast and country inn. So we used to have country inn, which defined these larger bed and breakfasts. And what we did was we just eliminated the definition of country inn and made it so that it's either a small bed and breakfast or a large bed and breakfast. So the small bed and breakfast, we adjusted the C U Ps so that it would be permitted in the R three, permitted in the R O. And then we didn't make any other changes beyond that. And then the larger bed and breakfast, we eliminated in both the R U and the R two and the R three, kept it as a C U P in the R four or the R O. And then permitted in the B one, B two, D T and T R. Do you have any questions or comments about bed and breakfasts and the proposals we proposed there?
So with the bed and breakfast of no more than eight guest rooms, that's now permitted in R three and R, R O, correct?
Correct.
What's the thought on that? Why?
I'll let Lucy talk to that.
Uh, the intensity of use compared to the multifamily that's permitted in those zoning districts. The eight or fewer guest rooms, whereas you can allow a multifamily that has considerably more units than that would be more intense than that. Also, bed and breakfasts tend to help utilize older homes uh, and making them more viable rather than tearing them down. You know, some of those big homes that no longer, um, families are a little too small for them. So it tried to help utilize our older housing stock for other uses.
Do you have any other discussion about bed and breakfasts?
Did we lose Mike?
Please.
Oh. I thought we might have lost you for a minute.
No. Answered my question. Thank you.
I'm good with it as proposed. Thanks.
You too.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Um, can I suggest real quick that we, I guess, skip to the ones that were specifically called out on the, on the cover letter? Um, to make sure we cover those since we are running.
Sure. Let me get to my cover letter.
Is that okay to, to ask, as we jump forward?
I think that's a good idea. Thanks.
We've covered food trucks, communication towers from N P to C U P and R O. That was one item.
Communication towers are down here. So change communication towers from N P to C U P in the R O. How do we feel about that?
Cannot recall what the discussion was around that. Mark or Mike, do you remember?
No, I don't have any problem with it, though.
I don't particularly remember the discussion around it.
Well, what's interesting is that I don't, I have communication towers as permitted in the R O right now. So do you want them as a conditional use permit in the R O?
Right now they're showing, um, I, there are communications tower are either permitted or not permitted at the chart I'm looking at.
Yeah, I've got them as permitted.
So, okay. So what's the next thing?
Are they supposed to be C U Ps?
I'm betting, I'm betting the discussion was, since they're all residential, residential zones, why wouldn't we keep that on the more restricted side of things? You know, I think it's a, it's a new definition in this table, isn't it? So
Yeah.
It needed to have something assigned to it. And I guess I'm not opposed to making that any of these. I don't, I guess I don't have a strong opinion on this one.
I prefer N P over C U P. Towers can be extraordinarily ugly and disturbing to, to view.
Should we go ahead and do that and see what, see what the community says?
I think that works for me.
Works for me.
There are plenty of other locations they could go.
Yeah, so N P for the R four, R O for communication towers.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we're talking about small, general retail, less than a square thousand square feet from N P to C U P and the R U.
So that one thousand square feet, just to be clear, is a new distinction. Right?
Correct.
And maybe it'd help if you just really quickly kind of explain what we're trying to do and then see if they're okay with it.
I'm good with changing it to a C U P.
Yeah, I mean, here again, was the thought of providing or reducing regulatory barriers to neighborhood centers as part of the growth policy update. And that we wanted to encourage small neighborhood stores. And the question is whether or not it should be N P to C U P in the RU to this one here.
I, I would, I would be, I would be a proponent of that because, because of the encouragement of small neighborhood stores um, in those areas. I think the RU and the R O districts are kind of appropriate for that.
I agree with that.
Okay. All right. I hear consensus on that. The next question is whether to allow general professional services from N P to P in the airport district.
And part of the, but what is part of the thought process there, I thought, because we moved administrative services into general professional offices and general professional was not allowed in the airport? And now when they're combined, the discussion is whether or not you want to allow them in the airport or not. Isn't, wasn't that kind of the discussion?
I think so, that we have some general professional services offices in the airport district now.
I think technically they're administrative service, but anyway.
I say it's a distinction that doesn't make a whole lot of difference because the airport's going to have a lot of say on what happens.
Well, actually it might, right? Um, cause we're, right now it's just N P. Which would not allow it to be permitted by the city regardless of what the airport says.
Yeah, right now at the airport, we have, um, Mako and the Forest Service and the immigration offices. Yeah, I think that's it in the airport.
And generally, does the airport authority, do they have any, do they have a strong opinion one way or another if they're, I mean, obviously they, they care and obviously they have input into whether or not they exist, but do they generally despise them?
No, no, they, I mean, they're the ones who permitted those three things in there. Through their lease option. So I think the thing, the distinction is, um, inhale me, Hillary, was it professional officers that weren't allowed or was it administrative uh, offices that weren't allowed in the airport? Or Lucy?
Uh, administrative services were permitted in the airport. We got rid of that particular use, administrative services, and rolled it into that general professional office services. And so to be consistent, we
Were general were general offices allowed in the airport, general professional?
No. Cause we didn't change that.
Yeah. So that's the distinction. Whether, um, I mean, first of all, the airports could control what they're going to control, but, um, being consistent with that concept of whether it's administrative service office or general professional, keeping that combination, it would only make sense to allow general professional in the airport. If you accept that premise that admin services should be rolled in there. That's just one thought.
I don't have any objection to changing that from not permitted to permitted.
Me neither.
I, I feel like it might be absolutely fine.
Okay. Very good. Let's move on to change mini storage ten or fewer units from P to C U P in the R three and R O, and then it should also be in the RU. So mini storage ten or fewer here. From P to C U P.
I think it's a poor use of property in, in either R three or R O. Very honestly, if you're trying to develop those. Many, many storage facilities are just nothing more than a, an opportunity to put in a bunch of garages that people can come at all hours to check on or do things. I, I, I don't think it adds anything to, to the neighborhood or benefits in any, to the R three or the R O in any way, shape or form. I would make them not permitted.
Was the around mini storage facilities that are associated with housing? Is that? I'm thinking I remember something along those lines where smaller scale mini storage could be located near some of the higher intensity housing.
That's correct. One of the rationales was as we promote higher density development, even with single family and duplexes where the lot sizes are getting smaller and the units are getting smaller. People in Montana tend to have a lot of toys. And to try and clean up the streets and the front yards and the backyards is to have some place for them to put those items. Also, people tend to take the garage and turn them into storage. I don't know if this will help or not, but, but
I think, I don't think it'll have, I think it'll have minimal impact.
Well, um, how do we feel about making them from permitted to C U Ps? I mean, I just, a mini storage facility, how, that's a conditional use permit. What am I going to condition it to do? I mean, what kind of conditions would we put on the permit? Or do we just make them N Ps?
Other communities require the facade to resemble the area. They have facades that look like stores or, or, um, they don't look like storage units. They're, they're more conducive to the neighborhood. Or they have screening landscaping that might be conditional.
I would, I would say before we revamped the C U P conditions that are available, the, making the C U P would be kind of a waste of time. But I think with the new, with the new, with the new code around that, that might actually be the right way to do this. If, if, if the desire is to kind of encourage it, I mean, If, if, if the desire is to kind of encourage it, I mean, I think the, the reasoning behind it is sound, certainly. I, I would, I would prefer CUP over permitted, certainly in R three and R O. As far as RU, I think there's some consistency there as we keep those the same. There's only one small portion of this city currently at RU anyway. Right over by the new Blue Cross. And I believe it, it probably does. It, it, it seems like that might, might apply as well. I would rather that, I'd rather it be NP or CUP than permitted. Am I right?
I would support the RU, R three and R four, R O being CUP.
Okay. Okay. So I'm hearing that in the R three, the R O and the RU, it should be a CUP.
I can live with that.
Okay. Let's move on to outdoor storage. So it should be allow outdoor storage, same as mini storage, except for a CUP and a CLM and MI. So mini outdoor storage, let me get there.
Can anyone find out outdoor storage? Shouldn't it be under storage?
I thought we discussed it not being added yet, maybe?
Is that the problem? It wasn't on the chart yet?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
We just had a general discussion about where we would want to allow it, if we wanted to allow it in the city.
Yeah, I think that's right. So how do we feel about it looking the same as mini storage, but CUP and the CLM and the MI?
I think we also would say not permitted in B two.
Outdoor storage.
Correct. I think our discussion was around if we would allow it in the city, where would it be allowed? And it looks like we decided it would be just CUP and CLM and MI.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, it is three minutes to eight. We already talked about, should general professional services be allowed use in the PLIs? We talked about that already. We are not going to talk about short-term rentals this evening. And then vehicle charging stations, same as a parking lot. That was our last item that we needed to discuss is the vehicle charging stations. Right now is permitted across the board. Whereas a parking lot would be not permitted in the RU, in the R one, the R three would be a conditional use permit in the R O. It would be permitted in the V one, V two, not permitted in the DT, the TR. Be permitted in the CLM, the MI, the PLI and the airport.
Was this, was this based on research from what other communities had done? Because I'm just curious how this works elsewhere, where they may have dealt with this issue already.
I, I looked at Missoula and I did not see it as a specific use called out.
I've seen this in, I've seen this in Ohio and where it's customarily come in is it's a, it's a revised parking lot that has metered charging stations there, but there's usually three to five. I, in a residential area, I, I, I don't think they have a whole lot of purpose. If we're very honestly, look at something to do with them, I would certainly say that we might want to consider putting some of them in, in some of the wonderful parking lots we have owned by the city.
Yeah. And I think that was part of the conversation. When I, one, there's two parts to the discussion, whether or not we need to even call this out as a separate thing. Because, um, uh, I mean, I understand that people want vehicle charging stations. But, um, whether or not you want to call it out as a separate thing at all and where you want it permitted as land uses. Um, or where it's, there is, it certainly isn't prohibited any place right now in the city. I see Rebecca just did something on the chat better and, thank you Rebecca. I'm looking at it right now. And as different, treats different types of charging stations as different land uses. If he's only placed certain charging stations in the right of way. I, it, it's, it's up to you guys whether you want to call it out now or if you want to look at it or.
How would we, how would we address them now if an application came in?
Well, quite honestly, I don't know that, um, if someone was going to put in an existing parking lot, it wouldn't fall under any of our zoning. If somebody wanted to put one on the right of way, they'd just get a permit from the city for a right of way use agreement. And if, I guess those are the two ways they would do it.
Yeah, right now we have a bank of the charging stations over by Super One Foods. But that came in as part of their parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't, isn't there a, a parking, parking reduction for vehicle charging?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, for that.
Yeah. So right now that's how, that's how we would treat it. So if, so to do a series of charging stations on public right of way, you'd have to go through a right of way use agreement with the city, especially if you were charging for it. And I, I don't disagree with Mike that putting them in parking garages would be a bad idea. But if we decided to do that, it wouldn't take any, as far as zoning, any additional review.
I, part of me wants to look ahead, like, like 10 years. I hope it doesn't take that long, but maybe it will. Frankly, that's maybe optimistic, but, um, 10 years from now, say, electric cars were, were everywhere and nobody had built enough infrastructure behind them to charge them up. And suddenly if we, if we keep vehicle charging stations as, as is defined, a paid facility that supplies electric energy for the recharging of plug-in vehicles as permitted by rights in all zones, no matter what, does that, does that create an instance where it's perhaps even viable for people to start demolishing single-family homes in any of the residential districts or even historic homes? In order to, you know, create an income property where they are charging people to charge their, charge their cars. Is that absurd? I mean, I feel like, feel like, you know, we should at least consider that potential future.
Well, um, we have a dirt parking lot beyond the city county building. So what I hear you saying is instead of the guy who owns the property letting cars park there, he could charge a little bit more and have it as electric charging station for people downtown. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah.
I would, I guess my suggestion on this one is it doesn't sound like it is a big issue yet. I do think that it, it will come up more and more as we move forward. But maybe we need to do a little more research into best practices for how we address these uses in city code.
Yeah.
And we can table it now and leave it out completely.
I, I, I support that, that concept Rebecca, it's a good suggestion.
I can dig that too.
So I'm hearing you say you want to table the vehicle charging station and just leave it out?
Yep.
Mark, did you say I can dig that?
It's after eight o'clock, Sharon.
Groovy, yeah. It, it brightened my day. Never mind.
I just had a, a question before we wrap up about the organization and where RU is placed on the table.
Oh, yeah.
I just, you know, in this conversation, we have been talking about a few things where RU and R four, R O would be more similar. I'm just um, work from home.
It's not me.
I was just, I, I guess I was going to make the suggestion that RU be moved so that it is next to the R four, R O instead of where it is between OSR and R one, R two.
I think that makes some good sense.
I can support that.
Alrighty. So are we done?
I think so. That took care of everything that was in the memo. We didn't get to go line by line through everything in the chart, but we made a real good effort. So it is eight o'clock. It's at eight oh six. So I, thank, thank you everyone very much for participating and for showing up. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
For all your work on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't look like we have any members of the public on the call anymore, so.
Okay.
I don't think there will be any public comment. But then it looks like we do have plans for a public hearing in October on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, tentatively, we're going to have to work with city attorney's office and get this ordinance on their view to draft it, so.
The other sections that might be impacted, this is the parking section. We don't anticipate changing parking requirements, but there are new uses that we'll be adding to that chart. And we will look at parking requirements for those.
Makes sense.
Okay. Well, thank everybody for your patience and your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. Bye bye.